Danny Wilcox.
Here.
Kevin Kirkwood.
Here.
Van Sands.
Here.
Eric Carlson. Eric Carlson. Absent. DeeDee Shot Grace. DeeDee Shot Grace. Absent. Robert Politik.
Here.
John Gresham.
Here.
Thank you, Chair. That's all.
Okay. You've got a quorum?
Yes, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay. All right, cell phones. Staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mark Denrider, Director of Community and Economic Development. A few items for you. On December 27, in their regular meeting, the Board of County Commissioners approved the Sterling Crossing PUD Amendment. The BOCC appointed John Gresham to the Planning Commission, who was just part of Roll Call here on that January 10, 2024. So, welcome to John, serving now on the Planning Commission for Elbert County.
Thank you.
In that same hearing, the Board approved the Scharnabreggen SUR and the EC West Service Plans. And that concludes my update for you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, and I take it we have nothing on consent agenda, correct?
That is correct. None.
Okay. Citizen comments? Do we have anything out there unrelated to the applications that we're going to hear, or application that we are going to hear tonight? Okay, hearing none? So let's go on to approval of meeting minutes. We have the November 14 minutes. They actually look a little shorter than they were, so I take it... Did it work over there? Good. Okay. Motion to review?
Motion to approve the meeting minutes from December 14.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Second? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're going into our public hearing process. What this starts is, we're a volunteer board commission. We're here appointed by the Commissioners. What we do, we're quasi judicial board, which what that means is we essentially judge the application based on our codes, that there are our existing codes, or the codes that apply to your application. So, the outcome of this, these hearings, this hearing can be three things. It can be, we can vote to recommend approval, recommend denial, or recommend approval with conditions. When I say recommend, that is the extent of what this committee can do, and our recommendation will go on to the Board of County Commissioners for the final approval, which will have the full say in what happens with the application. How this is presented, first what we'll ask is that our staff, CDS, will present the application. Then we'll go to, to the applicant and ask the applicant to present any more. At that point, we'll ask for citizen comments. We'll close the citizen comments, and at that point, we'll ask that we answer the questions that were brought up from the citizens. So seeing like we have not very many here tonight, I don't think we'll have a lot of, a lot of questions, but the second part of that is that we'll go around the Board, and then the Board will ask questions. After we're done with that, then I will call for a vote. So, with that, if we could, please? Mark, are you presenting? Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thanks, Mr. Chair. Again, Mark Denrider, Director of Community and Economic Development, Elbert County Government. Tonight, we have one agenda item for public hearing. It's Spring Valley Ranch filing 10. It's case number FP 220063. This is a final plat. The request is for a final plat approval for 323 lots in filing 10 of Spring Valley Ranch, and this is in the Spring Valley Ranch Planning Area M. The landowner is Spring Valley Land Investments. The applicant representative is CJ Kirst, and the location, again, that's Planning Area M of Spring Valley Ranch. That's north of County Road 174 and east of County Road 13. Here's an air photo of filing 10. It is north and west of the main area of Spring Valley Ranch and the golf course. You can see a blue overlay, and that is a floodplain. There's a thin area of floodplain in this particular phase. However, no lots are platted in the floodplain area. And immediately to the west is filing 5, which is, which was previously approved and under construction, and the roads from filing 5 and this filing 10 will be connected, and you'll see here in the next slide. So here's a vicinity map. The site is for this phase. This is Spring Valley Ranch. It's north again of County Road 174, east of County Road 13. You can see the arrow there on the map indicating where the site is located, and it's shaded in gray. The process for this application, there's a pre-application meeting back in June of 2022, and a community meeting that following month. The application's middle was October 6 of 2022, and then now here we are with the hearing dates, Planning Commission, January 16, 2024, and then the Board of County Commissioners, they will hear this case on February 14 of 2024. The notice for these hearings meets the requirements of Elbert County Regulations, and all of those mailings were done, and the signed postings as required. In Planning Area M, there will be 673 lots, and 323 of those are coming from this filing, filing 10. The referral process, as usual, goes out to a long list for review. This is our list of responding referral agencies, and there were no objections. Throughout the process with any referral, things do come up, and then they're ironed out. There's back and forth between the referral agencies, staff, and then also the applicant. For a final plat, there, we have a review criteria, and Article 1C of the Elbert County Subdivision Regulation has five specific review criteria for these subdivision applications. The first one is whether the subdivider has provided evidence that provision has been made for a water supply that's sufficient. The subdivider has provided a will serve letter for filing 10 from the Spring Valley Metro District, and this district has previously provided proof of supply that was deemed sufficient and approved by the Colorado Division of Water Resources, that's DWR, for the PUD, for the Planned Unit Development. Spring Valley Metro District 1 is the operational district that provides water and sewer service, and District 1 currently serves over 400 occupied homes and has adequate water and sewer capacity to serve all 323 lots in this particular filing. Go to number two of the review criteria. This is whether the subdivider has provided evidence to establish that if a public sewage disposal system is proposed, provision has been made for such system, and if other methods of sewage disposal are proposed, evidence that such systems will comply with state and local laws and regulations which are in effect at the time of submission of this, of a preliminary plat or a final plat. So that same will serve letter that I mentioned from Spring Valley Metro District, that also applies to sanitation. So that would be covered here. Number three, it's whether the subdivider has provided evidence to show that all areas of the proposed subdivision, which may involve soil or topographical conditions presenting hazards or requiring special precautions, have been identified by the subdivider, and that the proposed uses of these areas are compatible with such conditions. There are no hazards identified. Expansive soils were indicated in the preliminary geotech study. Additional soil treatment and associated compaction test will be required later on, and foundations obviously will have to be designed appropriately, but no issues there. And then number four, whether the application is in compliance with the requirements of the Elbert County subdivision and zoning regulations. We believe that the proposal does comply with regulations, and it supports. Number five, the, whether the application is generally consistent with the intent and goals of the Elbert County Comprehensive Plan. In the Comprehensive Plan, it is, it is supported that it's guided more or less by residential development, economic growth, and transportation goals. The Elbert County Residential Development encourages a range of lot sizes and residential densities associated with available roads and infrastructure, while still emphasizing the designation of open space and the preservation of areas of visual, historic, and natural consequence, and that aligns with the Comprehensive Plan. So that's the five criteria. We believe those were deemed qualified, and then this, now we go to the findings. So basically, Planning Department, we do recommend that you, the Planning Commission, will recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners for this requested Spring Valley Ranch filing 10, final plat, FP 22-0063. There are conditions of this approval. There are four of them. Number one, the applicant will be required to remove the public hearing sign within seven days of the decision by the Board of County Commissioners. Two, the zoning shall not become effective until all fees are paid, conditions of approval are met, and the final plat exhibit is recorded. Number three, recordation of all appropriate documentation to occur within 180 days of the BOCC's approval. And finally, number four, in conditions, a final development agreement, subdivision improvement agreement with surety is signed and executed and recorded. And that concludes the report. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and now I'm just going to return the presentation to the plat map. And thank you for your time. Any questions? We're here to answer them.
Thank you, Mark. So on the applicant, Mr. Kirst? Right?
Appreciate the presentation, Mark. Can you go back to the overall Spring Valley map? Lot of new faces here, a couple that I've seen for many years, but just to give you guys some quick background. This is our last filing. This is filing 10. The Spring Valley project, in terms of some of the early zoning with the PD, we're back in the late 90s, and we were through some density bonuses, allowed to plat up to 1876. This gets us to 1876. We're nearing about 500 occupied homes right now. We're going to likely see that number almost double here in the next couple of years. We had about 350 lots from filings six, five, six, and seven that have been developed in the last 18 months or so, so it'll generate a large amount of new homeowners out there. This is filing 10. As, as we're talking about tonight, we are at the point now where we are still, you know, seeing a lot of interest from builders. Their sales right now are very good. We work very closely with our Metro District. The Metro District oversees the water and sewer services, continually adding more infrastructure, drilling more wells. We're getting ready to build another tank, water tank, and as far as wastewater treatment capacity right now, we are in good shape. We're about 50% of the capacity at this point, but always working through what those expansion timelines look like. So I don't really have much more to add. I just wanted to give you guys a little background on the overall project and where this fits into that puzzle, so happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. This time, citizen comments. I think we only have, ma'am, did you? Yeah.
And I didn't have anything related to this at all?
Okay, all right. Thank you.
I want to speak later about Excel.
About Excel? Okay. Ma'am, there was a portion at the start of this meeting when we asked for citizen comments unrelated to the application. Okay, so. I've seen you sitting out there, so I would, I would ask that at this point, if you could, since we went past that, could you please get up? And what I would ask is that if you could keep your comments one to three minutes. Okay? And then give us your name and address. Okay. Oh, no, 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 I, I...
Want me to sign this?
Ah, you, you don't need to. Just if you just state your name and address.
Okay, my name is Peggy Patskowski. My husband's name is Tim, and we live at 950 County Road 133. And I wanted to come tonight just to further stress our objection to the Colorado pathway. That well, their preliminary, preliminary plans are to take it across the east end of our property, and we just feel that, we are just totally opposed to it. That especially being there are the alternate routes that they could use, the Rush Creek Wind Project, and then some, almost 20 years ago, they were trying to do this, and it was rejected, and they had decided to go down Highway 71. That's never happened. I don't know what that project was called, but it never came about, so they could even still use that one. It, this is just all about, as one guy said at the Commissioners, last Commissioner meetings that we attended, this is not about green power. It's all about money, and it's all about Excel making lots of money, millions of dollars. And at our, Elbert County's residents, at our expense, I contacted Gail Tobin and Remax Realtor. She sells a lot of property around here, and she said it will absolutely have a negative impact on our property value. Case in point, she had a contract on a place in Black Forest that had high voltage power lines, transmission lines across it. Her client met with her at the property just prior to the closing, and the lines were humming due to inclement weather, ice, wind, and he looked at her and he said, "I withdraw." And he pulled his contract, you know, so resented the contract. So it does have a real negative impact would have if it were to happen. It just is, like Tim had said in the letters that I sent to you folks, Commissioners and Mark, it, it just has a negative impact all the way around, and we're just totally against that. We see no benefit to Elbert County as a county, nor any of the residents thereof, and it's just not a good thing. This, this is just wrong, just wrong. You know, just a big entity like that is willing to make millions of dollars and take away all of our peace and things, you know, our peace and quiet and ruin our view shed and just, it's destructive all the way around. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mark, you have record? I don't know if that can go to a record or anything, but duly noted. All right, it's not the application we're hearing tonight, but we'll see if we can keep notes on that and put that forward to... The application when it comes forward. You get it? Good? Okay. Thank you. All right, so we have no comments on this application? Okay, thank you. So let's go around the horn. Mike, questions?
Yeah, I have two questions. Page 20 of our packet, number two, it states that there's five wells currently, and those five existing wells are adequate to serve the additional 323 lots that are being proposed. But throughout our packet, on pages, this, actually this paragraph, as well as page 32 and 48, it says additional wells will need to be developed and potentially drilled. So my question is, if it's adequate to serve the 323 additional lots, why do we anticipate having to drill more and develop more wells? Is there anticipated decline in production of the current wells that you have?
That's a good question. I mentioned that we work hand in hand with the Metro District, trying to stay ahead of and be prepared for infrastructure, wells being one of them. Wells are expensive. Right now, on the Arapaho and the Denver Aquifer wells, we spend probably close to 1.1, 1.2 million, all said and done. We get them drilled, we get the pumps in there, we get the power to it. We are continually planning and drilling kind of on a as-needed basis. Obviously, right now, with the approval of the filing 10 lots, we have 1876 lots that are approved. We're nearing 500 homes. So we have five wells. Those five wells are more than adequate at this point to handle not only the close to 500 homes that we've got, but in addition, another couple hundred more. But that doesn't mean that we don't continue to, to drill. We have plans to drill another Arapaho this summer. There's probably another, after that one, there's probably another five more that we have to drill. It, it's all about, you know, when the demand is there, and we obviously have to get all this entitlement done ahead, but we certainly don't put all the infrastructure in right at the time of entitlement. It comes at the time of demand.
I was just curious. The way it was written said they were adequate for the additional three, the five wells were adequate for the 323 homes, but then it said additional wells were going to be needed, so I was, I was a little confused with that verbiage. And then my last question is on page 37 of our packet with the letter, referral letter from the Colorado Division of Water Resources, where it says, "The county should be aware that the economic life of a water supply based on wells in a given Denver Basin aquifer may be less than 100 years or 300 years used for allocation due to anticipated water level declines." So they're anticipating water level declines, so that was kind of tied to my first question, was if you guys were experiencing any water level declines, or you anticipated any water level declines, and that's why you needed to drill the additional wells?
Yeah, I mean, the, the reason for drilling more wells is that each well can only produce so much. We've got currently a 650,000 gallon tank that half of it's for domestic potable use, and the other half of it's for fire suppression. We're in the process right now of building our final tank, which is close to four times that. It's 2.1 million gallons. So as we continue to, there, there's an art to running a well system where you've got five or six at one point in time. Very soon, you know, in the next five years, we may have closer to 12 all running at one time. They're really only operating in three aquifers, the Denver, the Arapaho, and the Laramie-Fox Hill. You can't run them all at the same time. You have to run some at certain times and run others at, at the others. But it's the storage that's the key to this. We have to have the storage to be in place for fire, for potable use, for irrigation purposes. And so, long-winded answer to your question, each well has very limited capacity, production capacity, but it is our storage that really is what is there to provide the service to our homeowners.
Okay. Thank you. Next? John?
So in regards to the, you said your new take that you're building is how many gallons?
2.1 million.
So based upon the rotation of the existing wells and/or future wells, you believe you'll be able to then support with 2.8 million gallons enough buffer for high and low times? And this is based upon the existing survey of, or what is recommended by the state, or what, what is recommended by your consultant?
It's both. We, we go through an extensive process with the state through our hydrogeology consultants that are analyzing the aquifer levels and, you know, what other wells are out there in the immediate area.
Right.
So it's a, it's a combined effort, and we've been in the middle of working with the state to show them that we have this sort of capacity. We could not have gotten the density, the 1876 that we have without originally proving to them that we had that capacity. So this is really just a continuation and being able to show them, okay, where we're at now today, we've drilled five, and we've got the ability to drill another, you know, six, seven, eight more.
Is there any notion of using, what's it called, purple, purple line, purple water?
You actually use a...
Reuse.
Replenishing system, a reuse.
We actually have...
For irrigation?
Yeah.
So we have a reuse plan that's been approved by the state, and we have a contract in place to build it. We're likely looking at building it later this winter. It's about a four-acre foot pond. It'll be over by the wastewater treatment plant. If you're familiar with that, it's kind of in the middle of the Front Nine.
Right.
And we, it, it's a little bit of a trade-off where we, up until now, have been assisting the golf course. When, when their capacities or their ability to irrigate during some of the hotter months expires, we sell them treated water. What this will do instead is we'll replace what we sell them that's been treated with, when I say treated, I mean coming out of our water tank.
Right.
Treated effluent. So instead of that effluent going directly into Running Creek, we divert it, it goes into the reuse pond, and that is what we will sell them in exchange.
Okay.
That then opens up our, our potable domestic capacity even more.
I was gonna say, so what, what do you think is gonna be the percentage of reduction of them pulling from your treated water then?
Probably this summer, I mean, assuming we don't have a flood that shuts the golf course down. I mean, they, if we can get this, this reuse pond built this summer, we'll be in a position to start taking care of what we've been giving them as far as potable water.
Right, right. But what I was saying was, what, what percentage of your potable water will that save? Will, will save, you know, fifty percent of what they pull from you? Eighty percent of what they pull from you?
We'll be able to give them a hundred percent of what they pulled from us through this.
Oh, through that, okay, alright. So it's, it's saving a hundred percent of your treated water then by, by providing this, this additional reclaimed water system?
Yeah, we, we discharge about eighty thousand gallons of treated effluent per day. Which is hard for us to be able to store eighty thousand gallons each day.
Right.
The size of this pond would be like thirty times what we're gonna build. But we still have the ability to take care of their demand with a four acre foot pond.
Okay, alright, very good, that's it.
So I just have a couple of easy questions. So the, when did we, and this may be a CDS question, when did we approve going from point five-five to point four acre foot? Cause we've got the vast majority of their stuff running at point four. And that basically worries me when we have a, a dry summer, a dry winter and people are basically pulling more than they should. That's gonna weigh on top of the, the, the demand of, the estimated demand of eight hundred and five acre feet per year. And you say you have capacity for ninety seven point five, or nine seventy-five point nine, but it still feels a little bit like a shell game in terms of, you know, whether you can actually meet the demand or not. So did we approve the, going from point five-five to point four for twelve hundred plus housing units? And how are you gonna cover the balance during a dry year? I, I run a, a water district that, that has two hundred and eighty-three houses. We have a five hundred thousand gallon tank. We have a few more foot, or a few more acres per, per person, but it's still pretty significant. And we're gonna, we, we worry about dry, dry winters or dry summers. So how are you gonna, gonna make that happen?
You want me to respond to?
That's fine, I mean, the first, the first part of it, I mean, that's a Division of Water Resource piece, you know, that's DWR, in terms of them making those type of adjustments.
Yeah, so what we found, we have the ability to monitor because we are metering every single home. So over the course of, you know, the last fifteen-plus years that there's been homeowners out there, we've got good data that tells us exactly how much each home has been using. And what we found is that it was less than what the original figure was. So we went through a process like Mark explained. It was approved by DWR and the county. It had to be done by a third-party water consultant and they approved it. We don't see any reason, because we've been through a lot of the very hot summers and that was factored into the, all of the data that we had. But that doesn't mean that we're not being conscientious. We now have a watering restriction program, and I know there's a better.
Otter Conservation Program.
Yeah, you know, we, we are in the middle of replacing all of our meters right now, which, you know, having new technology, new meters, making sure that nothing is being lost. And in addition, we're finally utilizing the reused water. You had, you had, somebody had asked about irrigating and while the state is getting closer and closer to utilizing purple pipe gray water on residences, residence yards, it's still a very laborous process.
It's segmentation, you gotta segment, segment the water lines out so you can actually provide that water.
Yeah, that's the easy part. It's just trying to convince the state that it's safe. And so anyways, we're, we're working on all of that. We're, we're staying involved in all of that, but that reduction was, was approved and it did take into consideration, you know, over fifteen years of water data. Just to, to be able to show the state that the original number was conservative.
So thanks, thanks for that. I think, I still don't have a good answer on whether you're gonna be able to, to meet the, the demand for dry years, but, but I think that's okay. The, the other question I had is, in the Kimberley Horn, or Kimbley Horn data, there's a whole segment there that basically talks about the original study and we gotta divide by zero and no data in there. So I don't know whether that's a miss or that's something that we can correct, but it's on.
The copy paste with all the X's, yeah?
Yeah.
I forgot about that, I was gonna ask about that too. It just seems like there was a copy paste there.
Page, page forty in the deck. And I don't, I'm not expecting you to answer that question, but it's definitely a, a miss and I would love to see that data.
Is that a traffic study?
Yeah, it's the original trip generation comparison. Can't do a real comparison if the, if the data's not there.
Okay, we can, we can go back and look at that particular item and get it remedied.
Okay, thank you.
Second letter from the water people stated that you had a well permit in process and they didn't know whether you'd drilled that or not, or you planning on drilling it or just letting the permit go. It's gonna expire here in a couple of months, so.
Yep. So we continue to stay, you know, try to stay ahead of things. We pulled two permits about a little over a year ago, maybe fifteen months or so ago in anticipation of, you know, those three hundred or so lots that we've currently got developed. We felt like the absorption rate was, was gonna continue and what happened with interest rates dramatically changed the absorption rate. So again, we don't build before it's, the demand is there. So when that absorption rate anticipation dropped, we decided to let that permit expire. And we are, we've reapplied now for the third Arapaho well and that's the one that we're gonna drill this summer.
Yeah, I was just curious, cause I didn't see any response to that, that's why I was wondering. One other, either point or question, okay, on reuse. I have a hydrogeologist, Fred, who came up with an idea that why put rainwater into ponds when I put it down in wells? Have you ever considered that?
No, I mean, I think that that may be something that a lot of these oil and gas guys do though. You know, when they're fracking, that's what that process involves. We haven't, I haven't ever really heard of that as a method, so to speak, for pot, for even irrigation water, just hasn't been something that.
Well, you, you'd end up saving some water if you.
Yeah, there's, there's not any evaporation.
Not evaporated well, but it does in the ponds. So we waste a lot of water that way because where everybody's putting it in the ponds. It may be time to consider other methods.
Right.
Is what I'm saying, and something to think about.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, that's, that is something to ask our consultants about.
And I know it's expensive to drill a well, but over time, we've got considerable savings.
It? Alright. Call for a vote. Now let me go through, before we call for the vote. If we have a split decision, what we'll do is we'll go around the board and essentially say why, why you went one way or the other. So, can I have a motion? FP twenty twenty dash zero zero.
Pardon me, Chair, if we could turn on microphones?
I, I'm sorry. I make a motion that we recommend approval of, whatever it is.
FP.
FP.
Twenty-two dash zero zero six three.
Good, okay.
Okay, we have a second.
Second.
Okay. Do we need to do a round the board vote?
Roll call vote, please.
Roll call vote, okay.
Roll call vote, Danny Wilcox?
Aye.
Kevin Kirkwood?
No, and the reason why is I still don't.
We'll talk about it after the vote. Okay.
Dan Sands?
Aye.
Mike Buck? Robert Politik?
Aye.
John Gresham?
Aye.
I'm ready for the reason for the vote.
Okay, Dan, go ahead and start. We'll go around and what I figured if we're, if we're gonna ask everybody to say the reason they voted, we should ask everyone, so.
Well, I, I looked at this and the water's there, okay? At least with the additional wells. This has been approved in the past, the, I mean, the whole concept was approved in the past. So this is just an additional approval of a specific piece of it.
Okay, okay, Kevin?
So in the last meeting on the filing ten, we deferred the idea that we would cover the water i- in the final plat, well, it's final plat time. And I still don't believe that we've got the adequate water. I think we're still moving shells on the table to get to a viable solution for water. I don't think we have the right wells drilled and I don't think we have enough wells drilled. And I'm worried that, that we're building something that, that is not sustainable.
Okay, Mike?
I voted yes because it's compatible with surrounding land uses and it was approved previously. And this is just the final, final plat.
My, I read over the application last week, very limited in the knowledge of everything here. So I didn't see anything that was against policy.
I voted aye because it meets all the criteria so far that has been established by the county rules and recommendations.
I voted aye because we have approved almost every filing that has come through this planning commission for the Spring Valley Ranches. That's the first part. Second part is I voted aye because we have no control over the water. The water was approved by the DWR, okay, a while ago. And I totally understand how Spring Valley Ranch actually manages their water supply and efforts and their infrastructure based on a number of conditions. One, economic conditions. Okay? And that was brought to us in many hearings before from, I believe, Mr. Marshall. And that's the way Spring Valley Ranch has been able to maneuver through all these downtimes and stay economically solvent because they don't go overboard on the infrastructure. They build as needed. And that's been able to keep them active in this county for a long period of time. And I've seen it with my own eyes over many, many years. So anyway, so that's why.
And, and I would add to that, I've seen where the opposite's been true and you have failures.
With, with roads.
Yeah, roads, everything, yeah.
Yeah. So with that, okay, do we have anything else on our agenda? Work session, no, I don't think we're ready for a work session tonight. We had that last time. Announcements, nothing? Motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.